Order at seven o'clock. You all seen?
Here.
Debbie?
Here.
Uh, Kenny?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Tom, would you like to do our invitation?
Sure. Lord Father, we love you so very much. We give thanks for the many blessings of this life. The opportunity to come here in this place and and make decisions for our community. And Lord, we ask your wisdom and blessing on all the things that we do here. Lord, these things we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Obligations to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, a nation of the invisible liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Obligations to the Texas one state under God.
I'm not from Texas.
Okay, do we have any citizen comments? Ms. Reagan?
Counsel, how are you tonight? I hope you're doing well. Um, I just wanted to talk a little bit about feeding famine and the food distributions that we're doing here. I'm grateful for the support we have from the city. I wanted to to thank those volunteers we have. And just kind of give you an update. This last distribution we had, we had to move over to the school because of the construction over here, but it's completed. And it looks good over there. It looks good. But we helped 247 citizens in our city. And surrounding areas, that's 94 families distributing just short of 9,000 pounds of food. So there's a lot of good things that are happening through that and a lot of other efforts in our community. Uh, we had 31 volunteers, which amounted to nearly 71 hours volunteer hours. So we have a lot of good things going on in the community. I appreciate the the city council for your support. And I'd like to invite anyone that would like to come and participate in one of our distributions. Just feel free to come out. And I'm grateful for letting yous assign, give them assigned protectors so that we can let our citizens. But thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. There is a January 2023 meetings. I'm mostly except the minister of January 72. Okay, two minutes about a motion to accept a minute so the January 23rd, maybe.
Say.
Greg has taken that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Okay, Ellen's the financial report for January 2023.
Ask a question. Have we ever got all the money set for COVID? How much is in the account now?
Seventy-five thousand.
Should be more than seventy-five now.
Correct. The other was spent last year to help pay these bills that we incurred.
That's not what we had discussed. Remember, you told me that.
That was prior to y'all being on the council.
I was on the council. Seventy-five thousand dollars was there. And then we got seventy-five thousand dollars at the beginning of this year or some, I forget.
Right.
Okay. And you know that was earmarked.
Yes, I know it was earmarked.
Okay. And you're the one that decided to pay a bill with it that we did.
No, ma'am. The council decided to pay these bills. We had pools of funds from where we had to pull them from.
I want to see where where we asked you to pull them from.
Okay. I don't have it right now.
Okay.
So I'll be more than happy to get it for you. All right.
Want to take a recess while she gets that?
That's up to y'all.
Make a motion, we recess until she returns.
Do you think she doesn't have it?
No, I just don't want it sitting out there.
I don't either.
No, we would like to see it.
Okay.
On my authority, I guess.
Someone else said it?
Do what?
Did nobody say?
I don't think.
So we're not getting a sense? Is that why nobody seconded the motion? Do you want to continue?
Oh, second. Hold it back. We need one second. Can't second it.
No, it's been taken?
Yeah, she didn't. She wasn't taking it.
I don't know how long you have to be on council to figure out what process is. Aye.
Oh, my gosh.
What just came to you that you're on the council? Oh, I don't feel that necessarily.
Would anybody mind to bow from the door for some fresh air?
Not at all.
No, I would remember that. You got no cash, ain't it? I knew it'll be a big fold out.
Oh.
That's one of them. They're all the same on different pages.
Well, this isn't what we had asked for anyway.
I understand, but I'm just saying that that's.
The taxes went up to the rate. Everything was valued at a higher tax rate this year. It was a big jump. It was a big jump. That was true. Because we've been all worked so hard. And during timeframe, but the rate went down. It doesn't matter taxes, but the rate.
Yeah. Every, 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 every quarter.
That's what I'm saying.
Because it was a huge burden on our business to pay that huge rate.
Okay, this is.
The overall correction. That is correct. All right. Because the rate made the overall levy against our home is getting harder. So the rate came down because they were going to get and they still gotta go. Went up so high. Well, the last June is not as simple as that. It's going to go up this next year. So that's why. Well, it's not just here. It's all down here. Because it was really through a hip. They're now starting to pressure us up to.
She waited.
The state audit and it's pushing really hard on the. The prices. They, they think they read it up, you know, this is a commercial business, but it's not. You know what I mean? They know the business it looked at is not, is not business there. So you can't charge them at the same rate that you knew that was in. You need to work on the building and everything. So you can't charge them the same rate. It's conditionally different. So they're really having it back and forth with us. It's going to help with this stuff.
Got my oncologist. Where does she go? Where's she at?
Really? Well, I asked specifically about money that was coming in. That wasn't grants. Well, they're talking about Robin Hood. And they're worried that it did up too high. And they'll be cutting the Robin Hood funding when they get them again. But they got less. They got less. They got a lot.
Not really ever doing anything.
So you've been down there talking to them too long?
Okay. I want like a map that I'm saying that thing right.
Interesting. Don't you think about it?
Tell me.
Hey guys, anything? Because these kids.
No. Are you headed to?
My interest is to go to college. Thank you.
More is better.
Can we hear that?
We're pretty secure. Probably be moving in and buy. He's a cherry. Go down and get a couple dozen men. Sit their old court. Wait for the back. Uh, I think I did one of, one of them bridges down. I mean, they could be done one day. I, it probably is. It's watered up. And if it be. I know we can go down there though.
Are you? Right, mother.
Was that? Just trying to hear my sister. Wow. Was that your sister? How's she?
I have very much respect.
Oh, that's good. I don't know. I'll be one of these. I can barely ever see. Yes. And like Joe Cool, they may work up when he does that. We went out there after they'll, they'll go fishing. Probably just leave ten in the lawn. And the young lake. We kept them up nine, eight, nine, three, four. Better tell them we got a team. Probably gonna be something.
Maybe he asked.
Not yet. Oh. You did it like them. I like to space it. Boy, can I be?
Question?
What'd you say, sir?
Did you get your question?
No, did he? Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, you want to call back to order? What else?
Sure.
Before we start, I, I think that we, Russell, Debbie, Kenny, Greg, we are going to have to get together and we're going to have to decide how these bills are being paid. Because right now.
I couldn't agree more.
Would you please quit interrupting me?
Are we back in session?
No, not yet.
Okay. And you're not the mayor right now. You want to call it back on the session?
Anyway, what I want to tell you is this. We have got, okay, call it in session. So I'll see you shut up.
Okay, I'm calling them. Um, being back into order at seven twenty.
Okay, this is a council. This, we have discussed this before. And we have got to get a hold on these bills. Uh, I believe we had talked once before. You were not on the council when what she's pulled up was here. You were on the council. You were not on the council. You were on the council. Okay?
Wait, who else was on the council? You were on the council. The commission was on the council. Just making sure we include everybody here.
And Kim, Kim was.
Yeah.
Kim was. Kim was. Okay, now the thing of it is, when these things are being presented, we, I know we had talked about there should be a certain limit on setting who, how much money can be paid without us knowing. Now, we did, we were not aware of this money that went out until after it went, went out. But this was done last year.
That's not true because y'all, y'all approved accounts payable.
On the border.
Every month.
Madam Chairman, this is not on the agenda. We're supposed to be talking about the financial statements for.
We are talking about financial statements.
For January, for January. The audit firm, the audit firm produced an audit of financials last year. They found no irregularities. Are you accusing somebody of doing something improper with city money?
No, I am not.
Okay, I'm just asking a question.
Well.
Why?
Why do you get to ask all the questions?
That's my job.
Oh, is it?
Madam Mayor, my responsibility are to the citizens of this community to make sure that our money is spent appropriately.
That's what she's trying to do. That's why you go around insulting other business owners.
Okay. Let's move on with the financials for the board.
Shake your head if you want to, but it was.
Okay.
Now, is she going to be allowed to say what she found?
Yes, the first last word.
I, I requested a recess so she could research the matter. I didn't ask for information.
Okay. Excuse me.
It was a courtesy.
Does that have another?
Huh?
Do y'all want to?
Is in regards to stuff from the last fiscal year?
Okay, let's move on with January's financial reports, please. And we're talking about the financial, the January financial reports that were approved to be paid in December that were paid along with the itemization that comes along with it. Does anybody have any questions about Jan, January's financial report? We're not talking about the monies and any other other fund, just the financial report itself. Any questions? Any notice? And you can't scare this stuff in financial court right now.
It's a hot deer.
We didn't hear what you said, Ms. Kim. Could you please repeat it?
Oh, should I think? Kind of scared exception, financial courts right now. Don't know if they write it or not. You know, COVID, money on hand. Do y'all have a table room or what do y'all want to do?
I made a motion table. To get more information.
Okay, where do you want more information on?
Hallway.
He's a little bit of information.
Okay, Greg has made a motion to table the financial reports for January 2023 until we have information on all accounts or on?
All, all line item numbers.
On all line item numbers.
Can you be more specific?
Yeah.
I mean, the, the numbers in the financial statement are historical numbers.
Okay, so, um, we're just taking an example, bulk water sales.
Why not fix and feed? Why don't we look at that one?
Let's look at fixing feet. I'm good with that. Walmart, let's look at them.
Let's look at everything we have to go for.
I agree. I do fully agree.
Well, in order to do that, y'all already approved the financial report, the accounts payable. Those were accounts payable from, uh, January, from to December. So if you want to go over something like that, you're going to have not to approve the accounts payable for February because those have not been paid. The other ones have been paid. So there's no use in holding up that agenda item unless you have, because you've already approved to pay them, in other words.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm just, that's just what it is.
All right, I'm fine.
So with that being said, would you like to change your motion or? It doesn't matter, ma'am. I'm just throwing it out there.
Make a motion to approve the financial statements for January 2023.
Okay, Greg made a motion to table.
I think there's no second on that one.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. There was, but there was the lack of the second that failed. So Russell has made a motion to approve the financial report for January 2023. Does anyone want to second that motion? Since I can, I'm going to second that motion. All in favor? Anybody? Make a motion.
I'm totally in my own favor.
Debbie?
I vote no.
Debbie?
No.
How did you vote, Deisha?
I was going to pass it, since it's, I was going to say yes, since it's already been approved. So you might as well do it. It's already been approved to be paid.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I know, but my old vote would have been yes, to go ahead and be done with that line item. So I have one, two, three, four. Okay, accounts payable for February 2023. Now this is where y'all can step up and not allow her to plan, or y'all want to go through each thing that she has to pay?
Make a motion to accept the accounts payable for February 2023.
Where does the money come from, cuz?
What money?
The, how to pay these bills, because you're the only one on the count, right? Problem is, you're the only one on the count. Nobody running up where these bills coming from, like, if they getting paid, you know they coming on them. Only one person on the count that's got access to it.
Okay, you understand that I sign the checks, and so does the mayor. She also signs a payment authorization for every single check, for every single bill that comes through this office.
I know that too, but you the first secretary and then Debbie here.
Okay.
Because she got access to the accounts, to the money.
Have y'all gone to hurt for any of that?
I don't know, because we ain't got a second, uh, uses your own, uh, quick books. I'm going to ask, are you, are you saying? I just think the man should have access to the funds to see where money is going to, that's all I'm saying.
She's assigned on the account, as is Deisha. They have access to the bank account.
I only sign if the mayor is on about.
What'd you say?
Yeah.
Only sign if the mayor is on about.
Correct, yeah.
Uh, can I ask a question? How come, last month it was nine seventy-six for David, what did we do this month that is a thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars?
Cemetery Association and Upper Trinity.
What'd you say it was?
Cemetery Association closing down that street. And whatever he's having to do with Upper Trinity for Taylor Street. There were, those were items that were all listed on there. Was it maybe due to a meeting?
What's the process for approv- what's the process for approving that invoice?
What do you mean?
I mean, we get an invoice, we get an invoice from him.
Uh-huh.
And you just put it in the system and cut a check?
No.
Okay, so what's the process?
Right here. Y'all have to approve it, then the check gets cut.
But some, somebody looks at the invoice beside you before it goes on the screen. So what, does the mayor approve? Just this? She signs the check?
When, okay. Let me go.
Thank you.
I can show you. They look like this. They're called payment authorizations. Has who it's being sent to, or who the payer, the bill's from, what it's for, the amount. I fill all this out. Prepared by, my initials, the date. Check is cut. After y'all have approved this, check is attached to this. Mayor then signs said check after I've already signed it as well, flip to this. She initials here and dates it.
It's not possible for you to issue a check by yourself?
Correct. Not at all.
Well, it's possible. I mean, it's possible.
They wouldn't cash it, because it needs two signatures.
That's great, but it's possible.
It is, I mean, I'm sure I can issue a check, whether or not the bank will honor it, is another question.
And the invoice is attached to your PA, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, see, uh, here, I'll show you with this one. This is, this is the loan that we're paying, one of our loans. This is what we received from them in the very beginning. This is what we get when it's time for it to be paid.
Was the seventy-five thousand?
Mm-hmm, yeah, this was the seventy-five thousand dollars.
And when was it issued?
This one was back in August of twenty-two. This is an old one, these are one of the. So there are multiple layers, multiple steps.
But when it gets to us, we don't know, we don't have a breakdown of what the attorney's being paid. All we know is, he's being paid twelve, uh, twelve hundred and twenty-nine dollars sixteen cents. I understand she has seen it and approved it, and, you know, cut a check.
Not yet.
I haven't seen, I don't see the invoice that he's.
Till after this?
These have to be approved before she.
Beforehand.
Beforehand, yes.
So why wouldn't we get information stating what this money's for?
Well, you could, I mean, we have done it this way before. We have got the invoices, denied the council meeting. Um, it's a, the invoices were initialed off on by the mayor. And then, so the invoices are seen prior to the PA being done. I mean, just whatever steps you'd like to change, or like to, I mean, there's multiple ways to do it. But this is just a list of what checks she has, she needs to cut in February.
Right.
To get it all paid.
Okay, so at that point, so if we were to see that and approve that, we still don't know, we, all we know is it's coming out of general fund. So.
And if Pat is initially those, those invoices, statements, however they send them, after, after they come in the mail, then her signature, after, after she signs it, then it's put on this accounts payable, that she approves it.
Right.
I do not see invoices.
We know, I'm just saying that is another way to do it, if there's a, if it's in question.
Well, I think that would be a good way to do it. So you're going to make yourself available to do that?
No, you would bring them here on.
On council email?
The invoices. You'd already had this made up. It's just a check and that, I mean, all you gotta do is bring the invoices in here. And if she, if she doesn't sign one, then you're just going to exit out. Or something to that effect. I mean, how would we all choose to, whatever we agree on to do. Just throwing that out there.
I think that's a great idea.
So, with that being said, on the accounts payable, do y'all want to, what do y'all want to do for February twenty-twenty-three?
I mean, we can't wait till next week.
Well, she's got all, have you got the PA done?
No.
No, you just had, you have the receipts.
I have all the invoices that we received, correct.
That's on this piece of paper?
Correct.
So, we can either have her go get them and pad an inch long. Or, I mean, it's, it's whatever y'all want to do. I was just throwing that out there.
There's two, two that I question. And are maybe more than two, but two that just pop up, and that's David Hamilton. I'd like to kind of know what we're paying for. And then Patterson. Patterson is plugged in.
Does anybody else have any other question on? Other than those three?
Be curious to know if anybody knows of any irregularities on any of these payable items.
Well, I don't know if you call it an irregularity, but I wasn't pleased with it. And that was the fact that, uh, when King Street had his problem with the surge line in the middle of it. They had just laid rock. They said they, they, as in Patterson, said he would come back and do the rock, okay? All right, uh, now, I don't want to say anything to make her mad, but the thing of it is, Dana went and told.
I've discussed it with you. You may not recall this. Yes, ma'am.
Hon, I'm going to start recording every, every one of our conversations. Okay, anyway, I, what happened was, the, uh, bill was, uh, I told them I did not want no rock laid until the bill was paid. Because.
No, you didn't want them to pay, you didn't want your rock laid until we had an email from them stating that they would reimburse us, and that was given to you. And you okayed it to have.
No, that's not what was said, but it, like I said, Dana, you and I both talked. You record me, I'll record you. Okay, and the thing of it is, is that, uh, to this day, we still have not been paid for the rock.
Deisha, do you recall when they laid that rock on King Street? I know I'm asking you, because you lived there.
I know.
It wasn't that long ago.
No. It's been a month, it's been probably about a month.
And they go through the same process we do for paying bills.
But I don't feel like, the, the part that you and I discussed then was the fact that you told Brent, I can get it for you cheaper.
No.
Okay.
They could get the rock for the same price, they were having an issue with somebody delivering it.
Well, nevertheless, we will both record each other, so therefore we will know what is going on.
So yes, we can get through this meeting, so as much as I hate to just let these two items go, I mean, from this day forward, we want information.
Okay, if y'all, y'all understand, y'all received these packets on Friday, correct? You all had all day long to ask for a copy of these invoices, and not one person asked me.
On Friday?
Today. You had all day today to ask me for any of these invoices, and those could have been produced. So the onus at that point becomes on you. If you want to know specifically what it is that's being paid to these companies.
You gonna be busy.
That's fine. That is, that is your, that is on you to specifically ask for these.
Yes.
If Russell doesn't want to see them, Debbie doesn't want to see them, but you do, that's on you to ask for it.
And I have, in the past. Not, not this one, not this one, but I have in the past.
And you've given.
And I've been given, yes.
Correct. Okay.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve the accounts payable.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of approving the accounts payable for February twenty-twenty-three?
Aye.
Aye, no.
Okay. Information reports. Greg, you want to give a utility, public utility, please?
Sure. We've had a lot of water leaks, as you can tell, from the Patterson bill. Trying to get roads, some of the roads repaired, which has been kind of hard because of the ice and the water. Uh, we've had some dishes cleaned out. Regular day-to-day duties.
Uh, thanks to Chief Stark for his report for January twenty-twenty-three. Actually, Chief, do you want to give the report? Okay, I got to run into a burning building, but he doesn't want to. Total calls, eight, medical calls, six, grass fires, one. Uh, other, one lift assist, volunteer hours total twenty-seven point fifty-five, water usage zero gallons. In the month of January, we had two nights of training and one business meeting. The Londonia Volunteer Fire Department is very shorthanded at the moment, and in desperate need of more volunteers. We have Tuesday nights at seven PM, if anyone is interested. Signed, Paul Stark, Chief of Londonia Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay, I'm administrator, um, department. Mayor election and duties are all, y'all have a copy of that. Uh, public hearing for Stevens Street is scheduled for, I'm guessing that's two twenty-seven instead of two twenty-six, because that's on a Sunday?
I'm sorry, Madam, Madam Chair, go, go back for a second. You said, what was the first thing you were talking about?
Uh, that the mayor election and duties, y'all have a copy in your packet?
Mayor election and duties.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
It's in the back.
Okay, so what, what agenda item is that for?
Uh, I have no idea, I was just telling you, let you know.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, Deisha, that should be two twenty-seven.
So that should be, uh, two twenty-seven instead of two twenty-six. Then another one is on schedule for three, six, twenty-three, and they are both at seven PM. Here at the City Hall. Uh, feeding Fannan will be held Tuesday, three, seven, twenty-twenty-three. And what time does that start?
That's nine AM.
Nine AM? Okay, what, uh, citywide cleanup is for, is April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three through May the sixth, twenty-twenty-three. And sign up for email, e-bills is now available, and you can call the City Hall to sign up, and that is optional. Okay. And the new business, approved resolution twenty-twenty-three oh two twenty-one, order of general election to be held on the sixth day of May, twenty-twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three oh two twenty-one, City of, City of Londonia, Londonia, Texas.
And I'm just going to interject that the school board, school will not be having a meeting, I mean, a, uh, election that day. We had candidates that were unopposed, so we just do a citywide, um, council election.
Any requirement to modify this document thing?
Uh, I just noticed that it was listed on there that we, it would be jointly done. We are, uh, next Monday night, the school will be posting that their, their, uh, call to elections is, you know, there won't be one.
Canceling your election.
You're uncanceled. So that will take care of that part of it.
Okay.
Deisha, will, will there be like a meet the candidates?
Uh, I have not been informed of that yet.
Chamber Commerce, April fifteenth.
Chamber does that, um, but we'll let everybody know when.
Okay.
And if they decide to do that. Okay, sorry, now, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, Greg is, uh, Russell's made a motion, and Greg has seconded the motion to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, aye. Get my, get my jam. Set the date for permit fees workshop. Uh, on the twenty-seventh, also is the first day that we can. On the twenty-seventh, also is the first day that we can draw for election on the ballot. So, and we also have the hearing, the public hearing-
Stevens Street.
For Stevens Street that day. Would y'all like to set the permit fees workshop, which should be a short one? Shouldn't be as long as to, to schedule it on that day as well? And starting the meetings at six-thirty? Think you can work out?
Okay.
Well, we can't, we'll have to start with probably the ballot drawing. Oh, publicly, well, that'll be-
So do one, six-thirty, one, seven.
The ballot drawing will take like five minutes.
And the public hearing should not take long, so-
Shouldn't take long either.
Seven-thirty. Six-thirty, seven, and seven-thirty.
Okay, so what's gonna be at six-thirty? The permit fees?
We'll do the ballot, the shortest one-
Do the permit fees last?
Okay, so then I would do, I, if, since the, the drawing only takes a few minutes, I would do the drawing at like six forty-five. Then your public hearing at seven, followed by your permit fees at-
Okay.
Seven-thirty.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I'm gonna make a motion to set the date for the permit fees workshop for, I'm sorry, was it three, six, or was it maybe?
February twenty-seventh.
Three, seven, twenty twenty-three at-
Six forty-five.
Thirty, nope, is that a thirty?
Seven-thirty, yeah, I'm looking at that.
Six forty-five is the drawing.
Seven-thirty. Three, six, that's at a thirty.
No, no.
No.
No, no.
Somebody else do it.
Okay, the first workshop-
Two twenty-seven.
The first workshop will be at six-thirty, and it will be the-
Drawing, six forty-five.
Six forty-five.
February twenty-seventh at six forty-five, you will do your candidate drawing for your election.
Your ballot drawing?
Yes. Seven P.M., you will have your public hearing. Seven-thirty, you will have your permit fees workshop.
Okay, okay then?
She can't do it, wow.
Six forty-five, ballot drawing. Seven P.M., public hearing. Seven-thirty P.M., will be your permit fees workshop.
Okay, Russell, will you make that motion?
Can you send the council an email with those dates in time, please?
Yes, I will.
I second it, approve it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Okay, the date for the P and Z workshop.
Do we have available dates? Do we have available dates from the city attorney to make sure he can be present?
He should be available on Mondays, or all, was it third Monday? Yeah.
So the twentieth of March is the next city council meeting?
That would be correct.
Six o'clock.
Make a motion to set the date for the P and Z workshop for March twentieth at six P.M.
Okay, Russell's made a motion to set the date for the P and Z workshop at six P.M. on three, twenty, twenty-three.
One second.
Give me a second to that motion, all in favor? Okay, now we need the date for the ordinance workshop.
Yeah. He needs to be here for that one, too. No, he really doesn't. Because we need to get them all together, and then we need to give them to him to word them right and put them together. So that can be any, any Monday or whatever y'all, they go on. Needs to be soon.
So Deola tried to do it before he comes, or we have our next city council meeting?
That'd be a good idea, try to do it before he comes, and that way if we get any questions, whatever, we'll hear.
Okay, what kind of, what date, Deola?
Does he plan to be here for the public hearings?
Stevens Street, well, he will be that day.
Mark six, then he'll just be here.
So Deola tried, let's try it on March the sixth. At six?
I thought we had the twenty twenty-seven.
You have to have two public hearings.
We've already got-
I understand.
Twenty-seventh and sixth.
You got your permit fees?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Okay, so-
I'm, I mean, y'all, I'm lost in my memory, but-
So is there a way I want to make that motion for three, six, at six P.M.? For ordinance workshop?
At what time?
Six.
Public hearing's at seven.
Okay. So moved. Stay on three, six.
Russell's made a motion, and you might want to second that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing, date for one-eleven Park Street, rezon request.
We'll have that one and the Stevens, it's on the same night.
Yes, as long as, as long as I get them the ad, it must go on paper by Thursday, or I have to give them the information by Thursday.
So that will be the date?
Three, six. Got, ordinance, ordinance is gonna take, take the whole time period. And so then it's-
The public hearing's at seven, the first one at seven?
Oh, that won't take long.
It should.
So seven, seven fifteen, or seven, seven thirty?
No, it's two, seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
You want to wait, because you can't start it early, no, understanding. Like, if you finish the first public hearing, you have seven five, you can't start the other until seven thirty.
Correct. Yeah.
You got seven fifteen, Deola, seven fifteen?
I don't think the first one's gonna run over fifteen minutes, huh? I mean, I guess it could, yeah. Maybe we can just stick with fifteen minutes.
Mm-hmm, seven, seven thirty?
Three, six, seven thirty.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, the O A G N I B R S.
Nibbers, yeah.
Nibbers, I'll kind of explain that to you if I can. Okay, we got a phone call from the government's office. And City of Ladonie Police Department got a grant. Seventy-five hundred dollars, is that right? Seventy-five hundred dollars. And of course, they are no longer with us, and so we have to temporary show project status. Which this paper here that y'all all should have got, shows that the police department is temporarily dissolved. Law enforcement services apparently being provided by Fannie County. At the point in time that the City of Ladonie Police Department is reinstated, the City of Ladonie agrees to become NIBRS compliant with the equipment and software purchase under this grant. And it has to be signed by all council members and the mayor, and sent back though.
So who wrote this?
This? James Mincy.
They said that we were in compliance, or the police department was in compliance on three items, but one they weren't. And that's the one that we're having to take care of.
Right. Already been received. Lynn, excuse me, Lynn Crowe is the one that actually sent this paper, and goes back to Mr. Mincy.
Who, Mr. Crowe?
Lynn Crowe is a- Grant specialist, three. And there was also another person that was involved in this, too.
They were, they were waiting also for some indication that the funds were spent on something?
Correct.
Is that something that we need to complete?
No, I, I think just by doing this, it relieves all-
But if they do want any proof, we do have it, yes.
Yeah. I think they already know that.
Again, those are voices in public conversations.
Lynn Crowe is with- It actually went through Grant Works also. So I make a motion that all the council members and mayor sign the project status statement and give it returned.
Okay, Greg has made a motion to sign the project status statement. Of this grant project.
One second.
Debbie is second in the motion, all in favor?
Oh, hang on, I have a que, I have a question. Oh, a comment and a question. So this, this is the result of measuring once and cutting once, right? We, in the police department, this has come up, issue with us having to figure out how to get a police department stood up or pay for the car, this came up now.
This isn't the car, this is-
I know, I understand, I understand that. I'm, I'm, the reason I'm asking these questions is I want to know what happens when we sign this and send it back? Everything is fine, or they decertify the Ladonie Police Department? Do we know-
And they what?
Decertify the Ladonie Police Department? They don't?
No.
You're one hundred percent sure of that?
We have a year.
Letter says it.
It says what?
It said, we, we are letting them know this, all we're doing is, is sending this information to the-
That we have dissolved-
D P S.
That you're sending a letter that says we have dissolved the police department? Okay, so the other question I have is, this is project status statement, right? Do we have a project plan? Do we, do we have any documentation that shows what we've done, who we've talked to, what actions we've taken to get a police department back in Ladonie?
I tell you what, let me send you this information and you take care of it.
I'm asking questions.
I'm, 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 I'm just telling you.
No, what you're telling me is, I have to sign this.
No, I'm not telling you-
No, that's exactly what your motion was. Can you read back?
Okay, okay, but I'm not telling you you have to sign it. My motion was that we do sign it.
That all council members sign.
Okay, that's my motion, you don't have to agree with that.
If the motion passes-
You-
I do have to-
Send the verbiage that is correct.
And I'm, and I'm, and I'm, I, listen-
And you do what you want to do.
Listen, I am fine, I am fine with that and your motion, as long as you're willing to acknowledge that there will be no ramifications. If you force me to sign this-
I'll send your information.
Force you?
You are welcome to call and talk to them. Call and get it.
I'm just, I'm asking-
We did not know anything about this.
Well, I didn't know anything about this until Friday.
Whoa, 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 whoa. So you were on the council when this was done?
When the police department was fired?
When, not only that, but when this, when this grant was made.
The NIBRS grant? Yes, when we had a police department, that's true.
Okay.
There are some assumptions that are made when you apply for a grant for a police department.
Okay, so you should have known this and what the agreement was, which is in the grant?
I should have known that you were gonna fire the police department.
Did you, did you agree with this? Did you agree with this grant?
Did I know, that you were gonna fire the police department? No, I did not know-
I didn't fire the police department?
I didn't know we were, I'm sorry, has temporary dissolved the city operating police department?
The, we had no choice in the matter of, of dissolving the police department.
Okay, so I think I've got to answer my question, which was, if we sign and send this in, there will be no impact on our ability to reform the police department?
We have one year to try to get a police department set back up.
This has no impact on, on reinstating the police department, absolutely none.
One year from when?
I guess-
Termination time.
Pardon?
The termination time.
Right, and we have one year, but the problem is, we, we'll count it. The problem is-
It's been six months.
The problem is, we only had thirty-one thousand dollars to pay someone that is now starting out at forty-five thousand dollars.
Do we budget money for paying a police department?
I know, y'all do not.
Okay, I'm just asking because they don't have-
That's the reason we don't have a police department, is because they weren't paid. The chief had to be paid. If he was paid, we would not be having this discussion.
Okay, so are we gonna lay the motion to the stands, or do y'all want to talk to each other?
I'm gonna withdraw, no motion. Do what you want.
I would agree with that, let Russell take care, ever since he knows so much.
You don't get to volunteer me, Madam Mayor.
What? You volunteer everybody else.
Okay, what are we gonna do?
You're the big man over here.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Okay, we're trying to decide, if y'all will please just talk.
This is what you do at ninety percent of our meetings. You try to start crap.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Let's, let's give out our NIBRS statement, decide what we're gonna do.
So Ladonie signed, you gotta pay seventy-five hundred back to the dead man?
Yes.
Yes.
What's the deadline for that?
There wasn't a deadline.
Okay, so there is no deadline, so it's not-
All I can tell you is she said ASAP. You take that, I'll get, I'll send you the information.
That'd be fantastic. I would like the information with the packet, so I can review it. When you put something on the agenda, it'd be nice to have the information.
You got what I got.
Apparently not.
Yeah.
You're reading some stuff over there that I don't see.
A lady's name?
You got Lynn Crowe?
A lady's name?
You talked to somebody on the phone? There are notes about the conversation?
No.
Didn't you say you talked to somebody on the phone?
Yeah, I talked to someone on the phone too. And she said the same thing that he is reenterating. They said that we, to take care of this matter, we need to sign the paper. Now, the other problem that we have is if we don't, we're gonna be having to pay the seventy-five hundred dollars. So, I mean, since we're just flush with money, don't sign it and we'll pay seventy-five hundred dollars.
What's the deadline? What are the effects of sending this in? Those are my two questions. Do we need to get the city attorney involved? He always pay him some more.
Okay, is there y'all to table this or what are y'all willing to do?
Move the table. Tell the next council mayor.
Russell, has made a motion to table the project status statement with signatures of everyone on the council on there, including the mayor? Anyone wanna second that motion?
I mean, if it has to have everybody's signature on it, don't sign it. Let me talk to the attorney about it. Get my questions answered. And then if I don't have a problem with it, I'll sign. That sounds very reasonable.
Two hundred and fifty dollars, please, you know.
What if we do something and we can never have a police department in Ladawney again?
They have to have.
What if we do something that closes our police department forever?
If we don't sign this soon, we're not gonna be able to be compliant with them and they won't renew this. That's up to you. If we do get a police department tomorrow, they're not gonna be NIBRIS certified. So, with this, we do have the option of coming back to that. Again, I'll give you the information.
Okay, so Russell's made a motion to table this until the next meeting or we find out information?
Can I just, since your concern, while valid at this point, NIBRIS has nothing to do with that. That would be a T-CO decision to take away any licensing-
Thank you.
From the city.
Thank you. That's the answer to the question that I needed. State your motion.
I'll read my motion.
Okay, I retract my motion. To table.
Okay, I would just like to say that information could've come out a long, well, before this-
It's not completely true though.
But, I'm not the police department administrator. That's what he means from that police department.
That may be true, but you could've came forth, you could've came forth to serve for your argument. So, anyway.
I'm not the administrator.
Amen. Okay. What are we gonna do on this subject?
Make a motion if y'all sign this. Project status statement.
Second.
Okay, Kimmy has made a motion to, for everyone to sign the project status statement for the NIBRIS grant. And Russell has seconded that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Debbie?
No.
Okay, Jean. And no government software.
Keep them compliant, y'all, no more.
Does this agenda, Adam, is left on there from last month? I don't, do you have any information about?
I don't know.
Yeah, but you won't like it 'cause you weren't involved, so it doesn't really matter.
This, so all I know is the new software, that's the only thing that's on this agenda and in my packet. My question is totally reasonable. So, please, somebody tell me what I should've known about on Friday.
Okay, are we talking about the information that you've been bringing? Or are we gonna make QuickBooks?
We can talk about both.
Okay.
Okay. But again, nobody else, myself, you, and the mayor have the information, have QuickBooks. So, we're gonna run into this crap again.
All I had was the phone number that I called and-
That's what I have, the information they gave us.
Basically, we didn't have to have a server. I talked to Dana about it. And then we could use iCloud.
No.
Not iCloud. They're cloud-based.
No.
Okay. QuickBooks Online allows multiple users.
Y'all talked to somebody different than I did then. No.
It's not, it is stored in their cloud.
No.
It's an online version that is stored in their cloud. There's, that's one way to get multiple users.
Anyway, it was gonna cost the five hundred or the thousand. It was a different-
They have to sign QuickBooks, it's just a newer version?
That's the way, the person that I called, that hundred number, the QuickBook one. And that's all I really know, 'cause that's all I-
And that's the same information that I was given as well. As you, but that was months back. And I was explicitly told that y'all did not want to use the online version due to, I am speaking.
Go ahead.
Due to the fact that y'all are afraid that it could be hacked easily. Was explicitly what I was told.
The new information we have has nothing to do with the people you talked to, okay? We talked to QuickBooks. Their suggestion is to go to QuickBooks twenty-three.
That's right.
Thousand and forty-nine dollars. They basically say unlimited users. And it is unlimited users, but there's only two-
Current?
User names. You know what I'm saying? Anybody can use that username, but you're only gonna be given two logons.
Which means two individuals can use it.
Right. Unless they use somebody else's name, anyway.
That is not okay.
I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying that's what they consider unlimited. All right, it has to have payroll. We have payroll now that will go on to the twenty-three. And- And it will give you ledgers and all that stuff. So, anyway, it's thousand forty-nine plus, he couldn't give me an exact on the annual. But they do have an annual fee on that, but it changes depending on who they use to upgrade stuff. So, it is cheaper than the CSA we were looking at. But the data is kept in-house, not on the cloud. And the administrator was another thing that we talked about. And the office manager will be the administrator, but will only have access if the mayor allows the access. So, they will not be able to go in and just make changes. It'll be kinda like signing checks. It'll take two authorizations to get in to making changes. And that's, this does, they do have- Support. Got two numbers for support.
That includes support that price?
Yeah, but it's not, it's not kinda like, you know, just- It's phone support and it's kinda, you might be on the phone, you know, for an hour before you talk to somebody. But there is support and we can, we can call and say, hey, we're trying to get this kinda spreadsheet or whatever, you know, through there. And, you know, is that possible? Yes, it is, okay. Can you talk to our administrator and walk them through it or whatever to get them to where we're at?
Wasn't he also saying that by the time we got set up, the end of the day, that anybody could be in there while they were-
Yeah, he said he could walk you through just setting it all up pretty easy. It's still the QuickBooks-based and-
But everybody has to go to twenty-three?
Has to go to twenty-three. Twenty-one is not supported anymore. Twenty-two is fixed to be non-supported, so twenty-three is what's next. So, we're supposed to have twenty-one now, what I was told. Anyway, don't matter, it's gonna have to be updated to twenty-three.
It has to.
So, the total amount's one thousand fifty?
Plus annual fee.
And we don't know how much that is?
And we don't. It just varies as to whoever they use to continue support.
How long before end of life of twenty-one?
It's already updated.
Unsupported?
Yes.
Probably just unsupported.
Yeah, still operational, I mean. You can do the first windings still, but-
And what is our monthly charge now?
Right now, we have fifteen a month, that's 'cause we have three employees.
He said right now, it's like seventy, eighty dollars, but he doesn't mean it's kinda exact. Per month, yeah.
Okay.
Two thousand total will get us to the end of the fiscal year with the software and support. So, I make a motion that we approve two thousand dollar expenditure for the upgraded QuickBooks to two thousand twenty-three and support through the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, Russell has made a motion to update the new, update the accounting software. Give me a second of that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, AT&amp;T fiber upgrade versus gray. Okay, Dana, you wanna tell us about this?
We got our most recent contract, basically, with AT&amp;T to stay on the copper lines. We're looking at about eight hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. We're currently paying about four fifty. That's what the very last page is, it's him explaining the ninety dollar per line charge increased over his previous contract. Take that, blah, blah, blah. So, what they're essentially trying to do is they want everybody to have a fiber. We've reached, we've been in contact with Mitchell White over at AT&amp;T. That's what these emails here are. He was asked a pointed question, this is presented to y'all in the past, and there was questions to what additional expenses would be incurred to upgrade the building and they have said none. That they bypass all the analog wiring, copper analog wiring. Looking at about, the third page is your total monthly cost of three seventy-seven. That's for the lines that we currently have.
You said it is eight twenty now?
It will be. Yeah, I mean, it pretty much is, it will be, yeah. If we don't do anything.
Where we get the second line fixed?
No, it's also still not fixed because of the copper issues that they're having. That's why they're wanting-
That's not gonna fix that.
Yes, it is.
It's in-house. How's that gonna fix it?
Fiber. We also bypass the current problematic copper analog wiring. That bypasses the copper wiring.
Not in-house.
Is it a wireless handset or is it a network?
It's fiber and I believe it is networked. It's something about that it closed directly into the router, they had us do a speed test and everything. So, it's almost more, it sounded like a voice, but, but yes, it will. They were pointedly asked that question.
So, what you're, what were being asked, you're on per use three seventy-seven a month?
And versus eight hundred something if we don't do anything? Correct.
And how long do we have to change?
They don't even have the line.
Yeah, they still have to run the fiber.
So, we would have time to call somebody else to see the quote?
To see what?
Yeah, other quotes other than eighteen twenty?
You're not gonna do better than that? I tested it.
Oh, we don't use AT&amp;T for school.
I know.
And it's better.
You're actually on a, I called the people you were on and they said it was, it's still on the AT&amp;T copper line, so.
It's DSL. The fiber's ten times faster. I tested it the other day over at the water district.
When is our monthly rate going up? Automatic or normal?
It already has, fortunately. This gentleman, the last page, Mr. Cantrell, has been pretty much writing it down. But they're eventually gonna stop giving us a credit. So, it's either, it's either we switch or we're just gonna pay eight twenty-five.
What's the deadline?
It really, I mean, we already passed that deadline. Like I said, they've been gracious enough to write it off for the past two or three months now. This was presented to y'all already.
You have a recommendation?
My recommendation is to switch to the fiber and save the city about five hundred dollars a month, but- I mean, you know. I mean, you know.
So, present it to the mayor?
I believe so. Yes. It does, if you'll notice, it does say that the federal, state, and municipal programs are not included in that, so obviously it'll be a little higher than that. But it would probably be no higher than what we're currently paying anymore, but it would be less.
So, close to $300 a pass?
I don't know.
Is that 677 versus 877?
Possibly. There will be one line that will remain analog, and that's the SCADA system, because it has to. It cannot be on the fiber.
And that copper's still okay?
And it's, and it's, that's, if you'll see, it's on here, it's built separately. They have it as SCADA system, but it's actually SCADA.
You have a contact I can talk to about that specific?
Which one?
Connection to the SCADA?
Yeah.
Connection?
Yeah, Mitchell White. His, on that first email. And I can get you his phone number. Actually, his phone number, or Sarah Bartley, either one of them that are on that first email. They've got phone numbers and emails in there both.
Give me a second bit or? Start saving one.
I just can't believe there's nobody else that we could turn to, you know?
Have somebody that could get a competitive quote for him, but- You want to kick it down the road?
I would like to see us just try.
Can you squeeze out a minute?
I can try, y'all.
Not what you, I mean-
All right, I make a motion to table until the next meeting.
Okay, you're going to go look at this one?
Okay, Russell's made a motion to table this until the next meeting, is that what you're saying? Give me a second with that motion, all in favor? Okay. We can convene into executive session at 8:34. Okay, we will reconvene into open session at 9:47. You know? There are no items to be discussed or decided upon, so we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who wants to make a motion, and Greg is seconding it, all in favor?
Aye.
We will adjourn at 9:47.